I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, April 15, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim Hale, are you on the line?
Here.
Stephanie Nowers?
Here.
Dee McKee?
Yep.
Maxwell Sumner?
Here.
Bill Gamble?
Here.
Demi Tufanov?
Yeah.
Ron Bernier?
Yeah, here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a forum.
Thank you. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? Yes, Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Resolution 25-040.
Did you get that okay? Assemblyperson Gamble, we restated, please, for one that comes up.
Yes, Resolution 25-040.
Is anyone else?
Yeah, and I'm going to pull 25-046.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you get that? Okay. Any, yes, Assemblyperson McKee?
Ours, 25-041, simply because I don't really know any candidates going to go on, so maybe I'll just wait on that.
Right, right, just, we just need the number now. Did you get this last number?
Yeah, and I would just clarify for the public, Madam Mayor, that it was Resolution 25-031, that Assemblymember McKee requested to be pulled.
Okay. Three, two, one.
25-031.
What about it?
That's the one you pull. Okay, thank you. Any other items to be pulled? I'm sorry, did I hear somebody say something?
I didn't know if it was two or just one. I have, I had 031 and 041.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, come on. But it's 25-037.
Okay. Any more? Assemblyperson McKee? Nope. Anyone else have anything else to pull? Do you have some questions?
Can we just repeat which ones have been pulled?
Sure. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Assemblymember McKee requested to pull Resolution 25-031. Assemblymember Gamble requested to pull Resolution 25-040. Assemblymember McKee requested to pull Resolution 25-041. Assemblymember Fahnov requested to pull Resolution 25-046. And Assemblymember McKee requested to pull AM 25-037.
Did Assemblyperson, did you have Gamble on there?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
Yes, man, right there. He was in between.
Okay, good, thank you. So, any other items to be pulled? Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda that they would like to make? We will be doing a presentation after the pledge to honor one of our citizens. That, that's not on the agenda. We'll be doing that. Okay? No other changes then? So, if you'd all stand for the pledge, and Deputy Mayor for the City of Palmer, would you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would lead you to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'm Edna De Vries, the Mayor of the Mattsu Borough, but I, because I am Mayor, I get to delegate. And, so, I'm going to delegate this evening for the presentation of this citation of appreciation to George Hayes, who is our Deputy Borough Manager. Do you want to use that mic, sir?
I think I can use this one. This award is going to Officer Dean Tippel. Dean, where are you? I understand he may not know exactly what this is for, but, so, let me read this. Citizen lifesaver presented this 15th day of April, 2025, to Dean Tippel. The Matanuska Susitna Borough commends your quick response in administering the Heimlich maneuver to a choking child. Your swift action to clear the girl's airway of an obstruction helped save the life of a fellow citizen on January 5, 2025. Signed, Edna De Vries, Matanuska Susitna Borough Man, Mayor, and Michael Brown, Matanuska Susitna Borough Manager. Thank you very much and congratulations.
So, one of those, Mayor. I'm sorry, if you guys would stay there. Yeah, I'm over here.
So, what I'd like to do now, I understand he has family, and church family, and work family. If you all would come up, we'd like you all in a picture with him. This just happened to happen in church at the time.
The next item on our agenda is minutes of the previous meetings. We had a regular assembly meeting on the 18th of March of '25. We had a joint Assembly School Board meeting on the 25th of March of 2025. And we had a regular assembly meeting on April 1st of 2025. Are there any changes from the Assembly regarding the minutes that have been presented? Okay, let the record show that Assemblyperson Bernier arrived at 6:10 PM. Hearing no changes, then the minutes have been presented. The next item is we have reports and correspondence, agency reports, and we have reports from the cities. And I think this is maybe the second time, maybe the first time, we've had report from the City of Palmer. So, come forth, Deputy Mayor, and, yeah, turn on the mic and...
Can you hear me? Okay, awesome. Well, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it. I just wanted to start out by giving some kudos. I went to, was able to go to the groundbreaking ceremony for the new visitor center. It's going to be amazing. Thank you so much for your support for that project. It's going to do a lot for the economy here in the Mattsu Valley. And, and also have to give a shout out to an employee of the, of the borough. Mr. Cook was at the Small Business Development Conference the other day, and I was able to be there as well. He gave an amazing presentation about small businesses and organizations, what do for the potential ash fall from the volcano eruption. So, that was a really great presentation. That kind of outreach is really important. And I just want to say, as far as the City of Palmer goes, our new city manager is starting, and that's going to be Colby Hickel Zirkle. She starts on April 28, so that's going to be coming up really soon here. And then we also coming up, we have Palmer Cleanup Days. It's going to be here on May 10, and that's going to be from 9 to 12, and close to 12 o'clock, probably about like 11:45-ish. We're going to do some grilling, and it's going to be really great. Make sure to bring kids there, because we're going to be giving out some bikes. That's going to be from the Chamber of Commerce. They are really nice to donate those bikes for that cause. And then also, May 16, everyone's favorite Friday fling starts up, so it's coming up really soon. And, and as also for the city, we are working on some upgrades to our water sewer system. So, we were able to get a really amazing loan from the State of Alaska that we're using to do things like help our, our, just infrastructure for that, including getting a, a new backup generator going. So, we got some amazing projects coming up, and thank you so much for your time. I'll make sure to come here on a regular basis and kind of darken the halls around here to give you guys a report. Thank you.
Okay. Wait just a minute, please. Does any of the Assembly have a question for the City of Palmer? And then a week from tonight, you, are you going to fill the vacant council seat, or are you just going to interview people?
It's, it should just be the interview process yet, but I haven't seen the upcoming agenda, so I don't know exactly when that's going to be on the agenda.
Okay, okay, I understood it was going to be on the 22nd, but, okay, all right, all righty. Okay, thanks again, Josh. Any other cities? Okay. I don't see anybody from the school district. And, but I do see somebody from the State of Alaska. Come on up, Tom. Todd? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Assemblymembers, staff. Todd Smolden with the Governor's Office in the Mattsu. I wanted to start with saying thank you to the Mattsu Fire, Rescue, and EMS personnel for participating in chutes and ladders on Saturday. I, I noticed one thing pretty quickly, which is that firefighters and rescue personnel are a lot shorter than police officers. I guess I never realized that, but it makes sense. Firefighters, rescue, confined spaces, burning buildings, you know, getting into cars where, where patients are to help them before EMS arrives, so. But it was good, a good event for the YMCA, and, and it was, I think it was good to see firefighters and the police officers working together on the court. I wanted to speak briefly about the education legislation that was passed by the Legislature, HB 69. The Governor has been very public about his feelings regarding what was passed by the Legislature. As it, as it exists and has been transmitted to him, he will not be supporting that BSA increase. I think it's a little discouraging from my perspective personally. This is something I work on in the Governor's Office, and so, a little discouraging because the Governor's been really clear about what he would like to see in terms of an education funding and policy package. And he's been clear for the last two years with the Legislature about what he would be willing to support and what he wouldn't. And they passed a funding-only piece of legislation anyway. So, I don't know if that is because they wanted to say that they, they passed a BSA increase, knowing that it wouldn't actually be signed, or what the motives are. But it is concerning because the longer it takes for the Legislature to work with the Governor on a complete package that includes funding and reforms, the more uncertainty there is for school districts on what funding will be for next year. So, I guess that's why it's a little discouraging for me personally, because I know that school districts are, you know, have to set their budgets. You have to set your budget on what you want to contribute as, as a borough to the school district. So, it makes budgeting a lot more difficult when the Legislature is so slow in, in deciding what, what school funding will be. There are other things happening. The, the Governor returned from overseas trip related to AK LNG and Alaska exports in general. You probably saw the news about a letter of intent from Taiwan as it relates to the AK LNG line. Also, there are reports that South Korea is going to be visiting Alaska. A part of that conversation will be related to AK LNG, with President Trump's administration using some political pressure on, on foreign countries to invest in the United States for improved trade relations. I think there's some opportunities, not only for the state, but potentially for the borough as well. There, there could be foreign investments coming into the United States, including Alaska, from foreign countries, from foreign investors, to try to, you know, make trade balance better. Not to get into an economic discussion, but, you know, there's trade deficits, and, and the way those balance is through investment. And so, so that's something that I'm sure the borough is already kind of exploring, and hopefully maybe even talking to some entities that might be interested in investing in Alaska or in the borough. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them, but, but that's all I have for tonight.
Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Thank you, through the Mayor. The South Korea delegation that's coming, or is there plans to have them come to the borough to talk about investment development opportunities for them?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I don't know what that schedule looks like yet, but if, if the borough wants to reach out to me via email or an Assembly member, I can certainly try to find out that information and see if there's any opportunities for them to visit the borough.
Any other questions or comments? I think the manager has a comment, if no one else does.
Yeah, I was just going to echo what Mr. Spold said. Shout out to DES, because there were a lot of folks in that chutes and ladders game, but also specifically to the Willow Caswell Fire Department, who really hosted and kind of facilitated pulling that together on our end. I, I would swear, Madam Mayor, I heard some people in the crowd chanting, "Put in the mullet." And certainly, I saw no...
He's getting a little red.
I saw no law enforcement personnel that had better hair than that.
Yeah, you're a little red, sir, but that's okay.
I appreciate that, through the Mayor, that I finally got Manager Brown to make a comment during my presentation. Thank, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Todd. I understand we have a report from the Library Board, please.
Yes, ma'am, and the smiley face will advance the slides. Just point it at me. Georgia, just point the clicker at me, and the smiley face is how you advance your slides.
Use the smiley face?
Oh, I got to gift it up, sorry. I'm usually at the other laptop.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Assembly. I'd like to take this opportunity to share this update from the Library Board. I'm Georgia Kanazovic, Chairperson of the Library Board. This presentation was written by Kathy Kaiser, who was unable to be here tonight. Today, we'll explore how our libraries provide access, foster growth, and enrich our communities, not through just books, but through the stories we share and preserve. Our theme is page, providing access, growth, and enrichment through our stories. Libraries are more than buildings with books. They are the heart of our communities where stories come to life. Every person, every family, and every community has a story. Libraries help us find, share, and preserve these stories, whether it's a child discovering their first favorite book, and elders sharing oral traditions, or a job seeker seeking new skills. The library plays a role in shaping those narratives.
Point it at me, Georgia. Put the clicker at me.
Over here?
At me.
At her, at Brenda.
At me. Did it get turned off? There you go.
Thanks, Caleb.
There you go.
Today, I'll show you how our libraries support the storytelling through four key areas. Programs and partnerships, access for all ages, growth and gathering, enrichment through education or page. Programs and partnerships, stories that connect us. One of our most powerful ways we foster storytelling is through our programs and partnerships. Our libraries offer storytimes that spark imagination in young readers, local friends groups that raise money for special library needs, and history and travel presentations that preserve the voices of our community. We also collaborate with schools, cultural organizations, and community groups to expand these efforts. By working together, we ensure that stories, past, present, and future, are recorded and shared. One example is the Natural History Speaker Series at the Sutton Public Library this spring. Libraries provide access in every form, books, digital archives, and even recorded histories. But access goes beyond just materials. We offer free technology and internet, allowing people to connect with their histories and share their own voices. We make sure our collections reflect diverse experiences so that everyone can see themselves in the stories we offer. We preserve and share local history, ensuring that future generations can learn from the past. Whether it's a child hearing their first story, a student researching a family history, or a veteran writing their memoir, the library is a place where stories can be both found and created. Growth and gathering, spaces for sharing our stories. Libraries aren't just quiet places to read. They are vibrant community spaces where people gather to learn, connect, and grow together. Book clubs bring people together to discuss ideas and perspectives. The picture on the right of the screen was taken at Big Lake's Library High Tea and Book Chat. Movie nights like Talkeetna's Book Movie, Book-to-Movie Program that they do with teens and tweens, where each month they read a book and watch a movie based on that book. Trapper Creek also has family movie nights. Craft meetups like Sutton's Common Threads that meets every other Friday, where people come to work on their individual projects, whether that's crochet, knitting, needlepoint, or whatever. There has also been an embroidery class at Big Lake. Public spaces allow for community discussions and even city council meetings. Library visits and participation are growing, showing how much our communities value these gathering places. Through programs like Sutton's Armchair Traveler, speakers, and cultural events, we are not just preserving stories, we are bringing people together to experience them firsthand. Lifelong learning is a form of storytelling. When we teach seedkeeping and plant propagation, we help people create their own stories of sustainable living. Did you know that most, if not all, our libraries have seed libraries? Local business seminars, like those held at the Willow Library, help people shape their own success stories. Bringing in the Alaska Family Services Women, Infants, and Children's Program to the Talkeetna Library provided nutrition resources and an opportunity to meet WIC appointments. Even paint nights, where the Sutton youth host an artist to come in and teach a painting. Those evenings provide art education, and the participants end up creating a story with paint. Education just isn't about knowledge, it's about passing down wisdom, culture, and experience. Libraries make that all possible. Now, we've made great strides, we also face challenges in ensuing these stories continue to be told. Funding is needed to maintain and expand storytelling programs. Technology updates will help us better preserve and share digital services. More space and staffing will allow us to reach more people and offer more programs. Libraries are more than just places to check out books. They are where we learn, gather, and share our stories. Through Programs, Access, Growth, and Enrichment Page, our libraries are shaping the narratives of our communities every day. By supporting our libraries, we are ensuring that these stories, past, present, and future, will continue to be told. Are there any questions? Assemblyperson Nowers? Thank you.
Thank you, through the Mayor. Just thank you for the presentation. I remember when the internet came about and everybody said, "Well, that's the death of libraries. We're not going to have people reading books anymore." And so, it's just amazing to see how vital and valuable our libraries are still, still are for people in the community, and hear all the things that are going on at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Assemblyperson McKee?
Yeah, um, hello?
Georgia?
I'm sorry. She's like, "I'm done." Yeah, I, I too, I grew up in libraries. It was the only thing that we could afford to do because they were free. So, my mom, with her seven kids, would troop down there with all of us, and everything that you've said about it is, is true. And I have to tell you, I think it's unfortunate, all the other kind of stuff that's going on right now about libraries, because that kind of colors, kind of puts a cast over it, and I regret that, but I hope we're going to resolve that. Has the, has, Mr. Spohn, I think is his name, said that they had not received a copy of the library's budget to review. Do you know if that's so, or, or if they're going to, or do they ever, or?
I'm sorry.
Oh, which? She was asking if the Library Board had reviewed the budget, had any input in the budget.
Yeah.
And so, that's right.
Is Mr. Spohn, is, is Mr. Spohn, are you, you and he both on?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, they're both, they're, yes, yeah.
So, he had said that, that you guys had not, that the board had not seen the budget for the library this year. Do, have you not had a look at it? And it's getting right...
For all five of the borough libraries. Did you do anything regarding a budget for the library?
Regarding budget?
Yeah.
That's taken up with Hugh, who's in charge of the Trails and Libraries.
But it didn't come to you. The Library Board? The Library Board, did you have a discussion regarding the budget that is being presented to the Assembly?
No, we don't.
Okay, good. All right, that, I, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Uh huh, thank you. Yeah, okay. All righty, so, okay, did you have a, a school board, no, borough on school issues? Assembly, are there any public relations reports? Okay, seeing none, then, Mr. Brown. Okay. And Mr. Attorney, do you have a report? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, report.
The upcoming meeting schedule is in the Clerk's Report in your red folders. There's a lot of meetings, don't be scared, we hope to see you there.
And I did look, and that, the meeting that had been postponed regarding the water setback is on there for... And I did look, and that, the meeting that had been postponed regarding the water setback is on there for May 1st. Okay, so, does anybody have any questions about the schedule? Okay, I guess not, then. The next item we have is citizens and other correspondence. Are there any comments on the citizens and other correspondence? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and they are presented. Madam Clerk, will you read the IMs into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. IM 25-097, informing the Assembly of the dates for the next tax foreclosure sale. And IM 25-099, informing the Assembly of the May 3rd, 2025, Krevas Moraine Trail cleanup.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Okay, hearing none, then they are presented. The next item is audience participation. We do have a signup sheet, it looks like. Okay. So, I'll go ahead and read the names that are on the signup sheet. And then, even if you didn't sign up and you do want to testify, you're welcome to. You'll just come up here and you're given three minutes. And so, um, okay, so Josh Tudor is on the first, but he's already talked to us. So, Randy Crosby?
Good evening, and thank you for taking time to listen to my concerns. I'm, I live in Trapper Creek, and I oppose the borough's plan to permit a gravel pit at mile 128 on the Parks Highway, and want to point out mainly the lack of transparency in the permitting process so far. One of the first things is, the borough has already done geotechnical work on the site in 2023. And they currently have a contractor on the subject parcel doing access work with plans to remove gravels and then deposit other gravels from a state road project. They plan on doing that from 2025 through 2027. And then remediation work could last, last up to four years beyond that. And then, in addition to that, there are long-term plans pointed out in the permit to provide additional gravel extraction, mostly indefinitely. So, the length of this activity definitely exceeds two years. And the current contractor plans on extracting up to 90,000 yards, cubic yards of gravel. And both of those needs clearly fall under a conditional use permit and not the administrative permit being applied for. I honestly don't know what the difference is between the two permits, but I would assume that the conditional permit, you know, takes a little bit more scrutiny by the public and by the borough officials. The other, probably more important issue to me is the Chalitna Bluff Trail that the permit and the land management staff all but ignore. The claim that the Chalitna Bluff Trail is not impacted in the proposed pit area, and, oh, and the proposed pit is to the east of the trail is false. The maps don't show the trail at all that are contained in the permit. But if it did, it would clearly show that it crosses, the trail crosses the current proposed extraction site. The main point I want to make tonight is that the borough should expand their land management planning process as it is a woefully inadequate process. There are some benefits to the community and the current users of the public lands in the same area. And I've spent more time driving here tonight and then turning around and driving back. It's a two-hour drive from my home to here and then two hours back. I've spent more time doing that than the, the planning department has spent in our community explaining what's going on with this proposal. And the community and residents are directly affected by this proposed pit. I would appreciate a more comprehensive approach to land management and consider the need for the community residents when visitors and, and residents are taken into concern. I have a lot more to say about this, but that's my time. And I do appreciate you listening to me. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Jackie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly. My name is Jackie. Go forth. Two years ago, in Fairbanks, they had a library conference. And at that conference, a session was done by a librarian named Devon Helkerberg. And she told everyone that they need to put sexualized fiction in the hands of children, I'm paraphrasing. And it's very difficult to do it with conservative families because the cover gives away the content. And so, they have, these books are so important, the books were going to be challenged, because they get the information in the children's hands and the parents don't know. Now, in Talkeetna recently, they had a Rose group up there that was doing a strategic focus plan. And they had a chart up on the wall that said "Threats to the Library." And two of those threats actually said "Representation on Committees" and "Book Challenges." And I agree they're being threatened, but I think what they're being threatened with is the grooming and sexualization of children, the denigrating of the nuclear family, and pushing DEI, which makes it so 85% or so of the population is kind of afraid to send their children to the library because of the content that's hidden between the covers of these books. This is a book called Tricks, and that is the concerning sections. Now, I started this because I believe that parents have the right to how much sexualization their children are allowed to see. They have the right. I don't have the right. Librarians don't have the right. Educators don't have the right. But parents can't do that unless they know what's being done to their children between the covers of these books. And that's why the LCAC is so important. Now, there are nine, eight, nine books now in the pipeline to the LCAC. They are in the adult section. They weren't in, some of them were not in the young adults. Some of them were moved preemptively by librarians in order to avoid having them read by the LCAC. I believe that is a strategy, keep the content hidden at all costs. Because the evidence is within the pages of these books, ladies and gentlemen. It always has been, and they will do anything to keep that hidden. So, the reason I challenge those is, number one, two years ago, I sent in some challenges, kind of like Trump did. When you negotiate, you throw out the biggest ball of the planet and you say, "Yes, we want Panama, Canada, and Greenland." No, I said, "I want these books removed and destroyed," 38 of them. And of course, I immediately was told that that's not acceptable, those are voided, and I can't do that. Okay. Unfortunately, last fall, they put on social media that I was a liar because I had these 38 book challenges out there that said I wanted books removed and destroyed. And I don't care what they call me, basically. I really don't care what people call me, but I am not a liar. So, therefore, I am making every single one of those 38 that I did write, true. The worst book in there is Verity. Verity. I hope they chose it last night. I had to leave the LC because I play cello in an orchestra, and I will not give that up because that is a joy in my life, and these books sap the joys of your life. I want to thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you eternally for the LCAC.
Thanks, Jackie. Karen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and Assembly and crew. My name's Karen Lewis. And the late Georgia that spoke about the libraries, that's, that's all true, and I think it's good. And a lot of the things I hear coming out of these librarians and, you know, the people that go there, it's beautiful, it's lovely. The thing is that they're leaving out the obscene stuff that's in there purposely. And the laws federally and statewide are very specific about what they consider to be obscene. And these books qualify. Now, it hasn't been before a court yet, and I hope we don't have to go that route because that's going to be spendy. But one way or another, those books have to get out of the library. There's just no excuse for it. We are the adults. We're supposed to be taking care of our children, not throwing them to the wolves. And that's what is happening. I don't, I used, I thought librarians are nice little white-haired ladies that walked around and helped people. These librarians are fighting to the death to keep this obscenity before them. Why? 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 Money? I don't know. But the thing is, we have to get those books out of there. When we go talk to these librarians, we ask them, because they moved a lot of the books to the adult area, and you think, "Okay, well, then we're safe." We ask them, "Will you let 10-year-olds, 12-year-olds, whatever, check out adult books?" Yes, even these obscene ones. So, they're simply moving them, but still allowing these children to check out these obscene books. Isn't that lovely? So, we have to do something about identifying for minors, under 16, or maybe even under 17, under 16 for sure, when they have one of these books that are obscene, that something alerts, so they don't, because it's, we don't need their minds molested. They don't need their minds molested. And we're the ones that have to protect them because the librarians aren't. I went to that meeting last night at the LCAC, and one of the friends for the library said that, "Well, we fighting the books only want white people in the books." I mean, I was astounded that someone could say something that ignorant and, and false. She also said that, "We want everybody all going to one church." Now, this, I wondered if there's maybe a gas leak in her area or something, because I've never heard anything so ridiculous. But that's what we're up against: evil, obscenity, and lies. So, one of the books that the friends donated to Wasilla Library was for a toddler. And it was about a two-year-old who believed they were born, you know, they were born female, but they just knew they were a boy. And it goes through this book, and, I mean, this book is for someone pre-kindergarten. This is garbage. And it's got to stop. And you guys, I mean, you've done a lot, but we've got to do more. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen. Rodney Hoover, over?
Hello, Madam Mayor and Assembly. Appreciate you giving me the time to speak. I'd like to discuss a proposal to subdivide off the parcel 10 and 13 out of Point McKenzie. I'm familiar with this farm. I lived on the farm for a year, worked on the farm for more time than that. And what they're planning on doing, or what they want, proposing to do, is to subdivide off the railroad extension. If you read the regulations, it says that you can only subdivide one time. So, if they end up subdividing that off, they aren't going to be able to subdivide it again. And it's, the farms out there are already a fairly big size, and a lot of people can't afford that. If someone did purchase a farm and wanted to subdivide it off, they couldn't do it again. It says on here, "The staffs believe that they could still subdivide it." But if they turn around and say that they can still subdivide it, well, I got a farm out in Point McKenzie. I want to subdivide mine also, but it's already been subdivided one time. So, you're going to have a whole slew of farmers out there complaining on this one if they move forward with that. And what the proposal is, is to take 200 feet, which is the rail extension, and for two miles. And anyone that's done any farming at all realizes that you can't go back and forth on 200 feet and turn around just constantly, over and over again. You would want to farm it the other way. But the way the land's laid out, it's not laid out to run it the long way, which would be a mile or two miles for both farms. And you could be reasonable to farm it that way. And then, the borough would have to figure out what they're going to do as far as managing that land and find farmers to farm something that's really not very farmable in those short distances. And I'll yield up the rest of the time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, would you state your name for the record, please?
Rodney Hoover.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Larissa, on up?
Good evening. My name is Larissa Fawnop, and I serve as a case manager working directly with Ukrainian families who have come to Alaska through the humanitarian parole program. Since the start of the war, over 900 Ukrainians have resettled through the legal pathway in Alaska, and nearly one-third of them are here in the Matsu. They are not just passing through their planting roots and becoming a part of this community. They arrive with legal status through the United for Ukraine program and often hold temporary protected status as well. Within the first few months of arrival, most are working, paying rent, and building new lives despite having left everything behind. I've seen their determination up close. Children are learning English and excelling in local schools. Parents are working hard, sometimes multiple jobs. They're volunteering, starting businesses, joining churches, and doing whatever they can to give back. These families who want to contribute, they're not looking for handouts, they're looking for a fair shot. At New Chance, our employment team has empowered over 850 Ukrainians with UHP or TPS status to thrive in Alaska's workforce. But despite all the progress, the challenge remains. Their legal status is still temporary. It could be revoked at any time, and there is no clear path to permanent residency, at least not yet. On March 31st, I emailed each of you to share this concern, and I want to express my gratitude to Stephanie Nowers for responding and sponsoring this resolution. I'm here tonight to follow up on that message and thank you for taking the time to listen. Thankfully, our senators and congressmen are already working on a solution, and we're very grateful for their leadership and ask the Assembly to stand with us in support of a permanent pathway forward. Your voice matters. A resolution from this body would send a strong, clear message, not only to Washington DC, but also to the families here behind me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'll apologize first of all. So, O-L-E-H, and the last name is T-E-L, or no, T-E-H-Y-A-T-N-I-K, maybe O-N? How about the O-N? Is that right? Okay, I got part of it right. Thank you. Sorry, sir.
Good evening to everyone present. Excuse me, my English is not very well.
Well, you just found out my foreign language is not very good either.
My name is Aleh Teletnikov. I understand, um, I have a big family. Me and my wife have six sons. And I want to thank you, on behalf of my family, on behalf of all Ukrainians, because I see that you have treated all of us very well, both the state and public or religions, organizations. And just people have been very kind and one can say provided us with everything we need for life and every more, even more. I believe that God will bless America for this and everyone who has done and is doing good. In the end, I want to thank all of you again. God bless you.
Thank you.
Excuse me for my English.
You did very good. Thank you, sir. And Thor, is that right? Am I getting close to something that somebody can recognize? Okay.
Good evening, dear members of Assembly. My name is Evromelink, and my family is standing here today. With, here today with hearts full of deep gratitude, on behalf of my family and many other Ukrainian families here, we arrived in Alaska through the United for Ukraine program. We want to sincerely thank you for your support and your compassion and your leadership. Almost three years ago, my family fled, fled the war in Ukraine, not knowing what the future would hold. We came to Alaska as strangers. We came to Alaska as strangers, Today, we are proud to say that we have become a self-efficient family. We have received a home loan. We have found jobs. And we are building a new life in this peaceful and beautiful state. We owe an enormous debt of gratitude to those who helped us along the way. We found our sponsors through Larissa Fano. And we were welcomed by Kathy and Alan Con, people we had never met before. They opened their hearts to us without hesitation. Their kindness will stay with us forever. Our son Vlad, now 16, is among the top students in the, at his, at his high school. He was recently named the Alaska State Champion in Microsoft Office and was invited to the state, to the national championship in Dallas this June. And his success is not only a family achievement, it is a testament of what, what can happen when refugees are given safety, opportunity, and support. Today, as you consider legislative path forward for Ukrainians who arrived under United for Ukraine program, we ask you to remember that behind every statistic is a family, a child potential, and people who want nothing more than to contribute to this country. The tone?
Go ahead, finish.
We are immensely grateful to the American people, this Assembly, to the government, to the Senate, to the Congress, for your mercy, hospitality, and unwavering efforts to protect and uplift those in need. You gave us not only shelter, but dignity. You gave us a future. From the from the bottom of our hearts, thank you.
Okay, is that, what do you say?
Ilya.
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 Ilya. Ilya H U R Y N? Okay?
He is wondering if it is possible to have a translator as he speaks myself.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I'm very grateful that you guys all gathered and welcomed us here. I was one of the first people who arrived to Alaska when the program United for Ukraine opened, and I probably have one of the most challenging processes with my paperwork. Hi, thank you for the many opportunities there and programs that you have provided us, the welcoming and opportunities to make money and to live here and to realize ourselves. When I arrived, I arrived with $100 in my pocket. And today, I am proud to say that I have a job. I build trusses. I work for Spinard? Builders Choice, I'm sorry. Builders Choice, and I work a full-time shift. And in the summertime, it's 50 to 60 hours. I'm sure and I know that Ukrainians are able to fulfill themselves and their potential here on this blessed land. We can develop and help develop infrastructure, businesses, and other services here. What we're asking for is to hear from you that we are needed here, that we are needed by you, because it is possible that in a short period of time, we could be asked to leave. We can do a lot more for the state, for the country. And we just thank you for this opportunity and are trusting us to do so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Manager, Assembly, Staff. My name's Moki Two. About a year ago, the RSA cartel came here crying, saying we owed them a lot of money because they overworked. There was so much snow. I'm kind of curious if they came in recently and said there wasn't snow, they'd like to get some of that money back. They, they, they went, the RSA went ahead, and you guys had bids last year. And what I'd like to say is that the Big Lake bid, we're paying those people $231 an hour. That's for four people, five days a week, to sit there, whether they work or do not work. So that's outrageous. That's outrageous money. It's unsustainable. I don't know who can afford to pay that. If you have those, that same contractor drive their side dump, you'll end up paying them $431.25 an hour to run that side dump, to bring chips to their yard, or whatever it is. Let me tell you that the municipality of Anchorage pays $125 for a road maintenance grader to work when they work. Not just on call. Not $231 a person on call, not to work, but $125 to work. They pay $95 for the snow hall, which is in Anchorage again. That's for a dump truck. And if we wanted to have a dump truck, we'd have to pay $436 for a dump truck in Anchorage, I mean, in Big Lake. I'm asking you, the borough, the Assembly, I'm urging you to let the contracts from last year go back out for rebid this year. There's plenty of time to do it. You're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars per RSA. Hundreds, hundreds, if, it's going to be a million when it's done. You, you gave a $10 million bonus last year. That's what it was. That's over and beyond the contract price prior is $10 million. That's a lot of money, and you're asking those taxpayers to pay it. That's ridiculous. The RSA board in Big Lake voted four to one for Big Lake to go out for rebid. The reasons were bad work, incompetent work, bad work, and then slow response time and the cost of the contract. I thought those were pretty good reasons when I heard it. I, I'm trying to nudge the Assembly to make last year's contracts go back out for rebid, look at this year's. And what they did this year to the contract at the end, they have to buy their own sand and gravel, which is about $11,000 to $12,000 a mile. So it's over $100,000 per RSA. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Moki. Adam Jansky?
Hi, Madam Mayor, Assembly. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. My name is Adam Jansky. I'm a farmer out in the Point McKenzie. I'm here to discuss the resolution number 25031. I just came to my attention that the borough was looking at doing the subdividing. I've been the one out there farming it for, I don't know, off and on for about five, eight years. I am concerned, I know the, the whole history of this place since I've been out there, since they did buy it. I understand the original purpose of getting the property for the railroad makes sense. But to look at subdividing it and the difficulties that would bring, the way the land is actually laid out, and I understand that you don't retain ownership if you buy it, but it's still an easement. I think the easement does more than enough to leave it out there for future development for the railroad if it ends up going through. By subdividing it, I am also an owner right across the road. And like Mr. Hoover just said, if it gets subdivided one time, the state law is it can't be subdivided again. If the state starts making, you know, allowing that to happen, I'm going to be one of the landowners, want the same thing, because my property was already subdivided when I bought it, and there's many out there that can't do it. We don't want to open up that Pandora box on there. It's, I think if it's just sold the way it is, with easement, it still allows whoever buys a property to maintain it. Because if you do subdivide it, the other thing is the, you're going to have to manage that property. It's going to have to go to lease. You're going to want to keep it cleared. And from the 10 years I've seen, I don't think the borough wants to manage any more property out there. These two pieces have been more than a problem for them. I don't see the benefit of doing it. I don't see it simplifying anything. Maybe I'm mistaken. And I think it's for the future. If the rail does ever happen, it's still got an easement. It could be developed. It doesn't hold anything back, but, but by subdividing it, it will. And I honestly think it will actually reduce the value of the property when it goes up for sale. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marley, is that what you say? Maria? So Maria, okay. We'll take you, whatever it is, okay?
Good evening. My name is Maria. I'm from Ukraine, and I have to endorse because I didn't prepare the speech. I want to say really big thank you for US, to this opportunity to live here in peace, without war, because I was born in Donetsk, Donbass, and war in my country, in this part of Ukraine started since 2014 year. And it's really hard. It's, war broke, broke a lot of family, and my too. I never can imagine that I, I will be in USA. But I have been here one year, and I'm really thankful for opportunity to continue my medical graduating. I'm a student of Job Corps. I choose CMA Certified Medical Assistant. And I really want to continue and go to Matsu College to be an nurse here. And war took a lot of, really a lot. A lot of lives, a lot of new lives. And I really want to ask all of us to support all Ukrainian people here and others to stay here, to continue our lives here. We want to, to do and continue our studies, work, businesses, to support US and, and say back, thank you, US. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry for my English. Yeah, I'm so sorry. But we really wait our help to all Ukrainians. And really thankful for all of us. Thank you so much.
So that is everybody that signed up. But we have an opportunity now for anybody that didn't sign up that would like to testify. Just come on up. Somebody move.
Hello, my name is Travis Friesen. I live in Palmer. I'll kind of, I'll somewhat make this short. Mrs. McKee, I met her on Sunday, and she talked, we were talking about recycling. And she wanted me to, to give an idea about, you know, tire recycling. And, and I did some research on it. And yeah, there is potential, you know, I'm, for one, for one thing, I want to thank you for, for bringing the glass recycling. That'll eventually come in the summer, I hope. And I think if this goes well, I would like to also see tire recycling. Because with tires, with the rubber, you can use it for asphalt and, and all sorts of things. And one thing that you can also use for is roofing. Now, with all the Trump's tariffs taken into place, you know, when we have to rely on imported metal, you know, for, for roofing, you know, it's going to, you know, the cost is going to, going to shoot up like crazy, and it's going to suck. So I thought for, for houses, you can, you can also, you can also use the vulcanized rubber from the tires to, to make, to make shingles. And, and shingles are generally cheaper than, than metal roofing. And also with, inside, inside the tires, there's these, there's these wire, there's these metal wires in there called beads. You can also use the beads. You can also recycle them for, for various metal products. So I'd like to see that, too. You can, you can also use it for asphalt, you know, for the, for the roads. Because let's, let's face it, the roads, roads, you know, when winter passes, the, the snow and ice, you know, will do, has already done its toll. So what, what, what would be a cheaper way, and also just as effective, to use, to use recycled tires as a, as, as a, as way to, to make, to make cement and all sorts of stuff? And there's all sorts of stuff, I would like to go on and on about tires. But I think, you know, once, once this glass recycling thing takes, takes an effect, and I want you to keep this on the record so that, you know, so that in the future, you'll be able to come up with, it'll be well worth the wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Anderson. I'm the librarian at Wasilla High School, and I'm also the Director of Resources for the Wasilla Workforce Development Initiative. We recently started this initiative. We started it just targeting Ukrainian refugees based on grant funding, and now it's open to the whole community. But I just wanted to talk to you guys about this initial phase. It included refugees. We had 78 sign up. We had, at the end of this, we had 18 of them placed in jobs. We had almost 20 create business licenses or further their business with different business plans, and we had 36 sign up for an additional course. We have several local partners like Kendall Ford. And they come here, they're so grateful, these people. Some of these people were, you know, engineers, architects in their home country, and they've left everything, and now they're working as janitors, or they're working in kitchens, and they're doing everything they can, working, you know, one, two jobs just to support their family. And they're so grateful. And you go, and it tugs on your heart a little bit because it realizes, it makes me remember why I got into education. You want to help people. And when you see that gratitude and people just so hungry to work and learn and become part of the community, I think it's just such an amazing thing to see. And I've got to know a lot of these people, and they're amazing. And they're family people, and they're hard workers. And I just want to implore you to pass the resolution to let them stay.
Thanks, Laura. She wants on?
Madam Mayor, Assembly members, staff. When I saw that the, I'm here to support resolution 25046, and when I saw it was removed from the consent agenda, I trust that was an indication that members of the Assembly wish to discuss the importance of supporting some of our local residents. I was going to testify at the second hearing, but because so many people are here in support of Ukrainian population, I thought I'd best do it now so that it has a little bit more emphasis for you and highlights the importance of your consideration. and highlights the importance of your consideration. It's no small thing. And please do not underestimate the importance of your role in supporting a resolution such as this. I too, my family and I came to America. We immigrated here, learned English. We used our libraries. We used all the information available in the libraries, some of which we were very grateful to have the opportunity to learn about, some of which we felt was quite distasteful. However, we still were able to use it because we were familiar with things that were distasteful. But as somebody mentioned earlier, one of the people who testified here or provided input, I too came to Alaska with $100 in my pocket. And after 49 years here in Alaska, I'm happy to say that I now have $100 in my bank account. Alaska's been very good to me. And I know Alaskans always reciprocate to people who come to Alaska in their generosity and in their welcomeness. I want to encourage the Assembly to be welcoming. I want the Assembly to consider, as mentioned earlier by the representative from the state, how important it is that the state and the borough supports investments, especially foreign investments like from South Korea and from Taiwan. And I wish that you not forget that there is also some investment you should support in the people who come here to the valley and who choose this as a place to live. Your support for them, their support for you, make the borough a better place. I know this firsthand. I've experienced firsthand with some of you personally. And again, I'd like to thank you for the time. And I know that you will invest in the people who are living here, who want to be residents for a longer time and take advantage of and contribute to what the valley has to offer under your leadership. So thank you.
Herb, would you, Herb, Herb, would you give your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I thought I did. My name is Herb Bischoff and I live here in Matsu Valley.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Ladisav Malnik and I'm currently a student in Wasilla High School. I'm a sophomore. And I won't take much of your time. I just wanted to say that the school system is doing a very good job. And well, the teachers, the staff, they all provide a very good environment for Ukrainian students like me to adapt, to learn English, to learn how the education system works here. And well, I'm basically just very thankful and thank you, thank you on the behalf of all of the Ukrainian students. And well, you guys are doing a good job. That's, that's it.
You did very good. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, my name is Mark. I'm from Ukraine. And first of all, I wanted to thank you for the support of Ukraine and my family. As the library representative said, each of us has our own history, each family. We are Ukrainians also have our own history. All of us started the new storying, storying here in America. And we would like to continue our story here. Many of us want it. And we are hoping for your support. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. And if anyone wants to use an interpreter, they can, or you can speak just for yourself. We allow both. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers and staff. My name is Alexander Harmon and I reside in Meadow Lakes. I turned 30 years old this year. I set a goal 10 years ago when I got married when I was 20, that I would want to reach a specific salary and I would want to buy my first property. Here I am today. I bought my first property in Meadow Lakes. Praise God. And I have reached a specific salary that I knew I would need in order to survive in the future when I was 20 years old. Well, the economy has still left me behind and probably everyone else in this room, if not the state. And I believe there's a different issue at hand. What I want to talk about is usually the big topic in the borough and it is property taxes. It is a hard discussion, but it's probably come to a point, and many other states are following, that we need to look at other options to fund besides property taxes. $1,900 a month is a lot for a mortgage. Many people paying 1,900, $1,800 is about the market price to 2,500 a month in a mortgage. That's absolutely ridiculous. That's insane. And I think we can do things to change it. It's just going to be difficult. Our currency after 1971 to today has completely lost all value. There is no backing. There is no faith in the federal government anymore. There is no more oil involved. And the petrodollar was pretty much destroyed June of last year, the year prior, excuse me. But either way, my point being, our money, our currency, has no value. So now we're being taxed on a currency that has no value. And we have to continue to work for this same currency that has no value. We could take the opportunity as a borough to slowly start moving our finances into gold and silver. As the Constitution says, 110:1, I believe, in order to pay debts, it has to be done with gold and silver coin. There also must not be bills to be used for debt. And we use bills. We use credit. We break contracts daily with our financial system. And I think with this discussion and with where we are, we could start here and then have that influence and build up to the state level and even to the national level. So as a citizen, as a property owner, I ask for a little bit of breathing room financially. I believe a lot of people in the borough obviously agree. If you're active on Facebook, it's a slaughterhouse when it comes to property taxes in the borough. And so I don't want to be someone who slaughters. I want to be someone who presents ideas that maybe could help home and property owners retain full ownership and not rent it from the government. We know the arguments. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly? You can do it for yourself this time, huh?
Yes, maybe. Good evening. My name is Zoria Vanessyevich. I am the Director of New Chance. It is a nonprofit organization. Our base is in Anchorage, our office, as well as in Matsu, Fairbanks, and we serve the statewide. As it has been said, as you have met many of our clients, the Ukrainian folks who spoke, we welcomed them starting in May of 2022, so it'll be three years soon, that many of them started arriving. As Larissa has mentioned, there are about 1,000 folks here on this status called Uniting for Ukraine. And this status is at the potential risk of being revoked by our federal government. And that is where the concern, that is where the emotion, that is where the worry comes from. And that is why we are here today. The reason why we're asking, I really liked how Ilya was speaking and said, "We want to hear that we are welcomed by you. We want to hear that you want us here." As you can hear, people are investing themselves. They want to be part of this community. Want to continue to be part of this community. They have integrated. They have sent their kids to school. They're getting jobs and not just one, but often two or three. It is estimated that our clients have paid over $2 million in income tax. As we are seeing, our team is very small, but the people are very motivated. So it's very easy to work with folks who want to build a life, who want to go to work. And we're very proud of the work that they have done. And so as Ilya has already said, they want to know that you are welcoming them here. And what we're asking is for your voices, who, your respected voices, they carry a lot more value, we believe, to kind of echo what you hear today to our federal congregation too, so that they are supportive and on that level where they can do something about their status, about their permanent status here. We're hoping to continue to build our economy because these people are greatly contributing to that. Our new president has said that he wants to tap in and unleash Alaska's new potential. We want this labor force. We want these people who want to work. We want to untap or tap into that, a potential that Alaska has. And I think it would be only foolish to let them go when we have such great people here. So we are asking for your support in keeping the Ukrainians that are already here. And we know who they are. We don't have anyone who, you know, we're supporting them through any criminal activity or anything like that. We are supporting families who are asking for a second job, for a promotion or something else that they're going through. Those are the things that we are working on right now as a nonprofit organization. And thank you everyone for your time and for your continued support.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the Assembly? Caleb, do we have anybody online? We do not. Okay, one last chance then. Anyone else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close audience participation. And Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Your first public hearing is ordinance serial number 25-040. An ordinance accepting and appropriating $7,500 for the Matsu Trails and Parks Foundation to continue the Sagal Horse Trail improvements with accompanying resolution 25-032, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Sagal Horse Trail improvements.
Okay, staff, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening for the record. Gillian Morrissey, Community Development Director. And through the mayor to the Assembly members, this legislation is before you. It was, I want to share just a few highlights about this legislation. So this was, this trail was formerly maintained by nonprofits and volunteers and all have since gone. And this property is, excuse me, this infrastructure is out near Finger Lake Elementary School. And the infrastructure, the trail and the dock has become interwoven into the school curriculum and the school community. The borough is leveraging funds provided by the Matsu Borough Trail Crew to help with this project. And I also wanted to note that there is no match requirement for accepting and appropriating this money. I'm here for any questions.
Questions, the staff? Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 25-040. Guess we do not have a sign up sheet. So anyone is welcome to address the Assembly regarding, and testimony at this time will be restricted to the ordinance 25-040. Anyone that would like to testify and give input to the Assembly on this ordinance? Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. Okay. Going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Assembly person phone off.
I move to adopt ordinance serial number 25-040 and resolution serial number 25-032.
All right, thank you. I have on, that it was supposed to be Assembly person, so whatever. But anyway, it's on the table. Discussion from the Assembly. Okay, is there any objection from the Assembly? Okay, hearing no objection, then the legislation has passed. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial, ordinance accepting and appropriating $50,000 from the Matsu Trails and Parks Foundation to begin the design of the Jonesville Public Use Area. And resolution 25033, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Jonesville Public Use Area.
Okay, staff, please, again.
Again, for the record, Gillian Morrissey, Community Development Director. I'm very excited to have this one in front of you tonight. This, this money is going to be used for the Phase One Design and feasibility study for the Jonesville Shooting Park. This is a project that community development has made a priority and has been an assembly priority. And we continue to move forward. We currently are in our final phase of review for the scope of work for this RFP and are working through our departments internally and also inter-agency with DNR. The Assembly has set aside money previously to meet the required match for this, which is $12,500. And we respectfully hope that you will accept and appropriate this money. I'm here for any questions.
Questions, any? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 25-041 and resolution 25-033. And no sign up sheet. Okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the Assembly on this ordinance or this resolution? Okay, do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. And Assembly person, hail. Do you have this motion or no?
I could, yes, certainly. I move to adopt the ordinance on the floor.
Is there any discussion? Okay, is there any objection?
Oh, yeah. My name, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I would like to thank the Matsu Trails and Parks Foundation for providing this, providing this $50,000 here. This is going to be a great project and I'm looking forward to seeing it happen.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all are. It's like, seems like a long time in coming, longer to more of you probably than just me. But I know ever since we've, I've been here, and I see Deputy Mayor shaking his head too. So anyway, any further discussion? Okay, is there any objection?
Madam Mayor, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, actually, I just was going to say, if I may be recognized, this has actually been a priority for the Sutton community since before I was on the Assembly. So it's been more than six years in coming.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't even know how long, but it's far too long. I guess that's the bottom line, sir. So is there any objection to the legislation? If not, then the legislation passes. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial number 25-049. An ordinance accepting and appropriating $932,200 from the Alaska State Department of Fish and Game Sustainable Salmon Fund for Kingslake and Anderson Lake Fish Passage improvements. With resolution 25-037, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement with the Alaska State Department of Fish and Game for Kingslake and Anderson Lake Fish Passage.
Okay, staff report, sir.
Madam Mayor, Member Assembly, Tom Adams, Public Works Director. This is an acceptance appropriate grant funding from the State of Alaska Fish and Game in the amount of $932,200. It does have a match component of $326,270, which is funding that has been previously appropriated in Fish Passage Match Funds. So those funds are there. This will accomplish the repair and a replacement of two culverts in the Kingslake-Anderson Lake drainage area. One in between the, the Smith, that's between the two lakes, King and Anderson Lake, and then the outfall from Anderson Lake.
Any questions by the Assembly to staff? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 25-049 and resolution 25-037. We do not have a sign up sheet. Anyone else from the audience? Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing. And then Assembly person phone off. Do you have this one?
No, I don't. I only have that one.
Deputy Mayor, you don't have it either? Sure, okay. Assembly person Sumner, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance 25-051. Yeah. Oh, wait, no, sorry. I apologize. I move to adopt ordinance 25-049. An ordinance accepting and appropriating $3,200 from the Alaska State Department of Fish and Game Salmon Fund for Kingslake-Anderson Lake Fish Passage Improvements. And resolution 25-037.
Okay, discussion by the Assembly. Is there any objection to the legislation? Seeing and hearing none, the legislation has passed. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial number 25-051. An ordinance approving an appropriation of $66,663 for the Talkeetna Flood Service Area Fund balance to the Talkeetna Flood Service Area Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget.
Staff?
Madam Mayor, Member Assembly, again, my name is... Madam Mayor, Member Sumner, again, my name is Tom Adams, Public Works Director. This is an appropriation of move funds from fund balance from the Takina Flood Service Area to the operating funds to facilitate a change order, which is actually on the agenda tonight, under the consent agenda, for some work that we conducted for the repair of, and maintenance on the revetment and dike out in the Takina area.
Questions to staff? Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah, this is related to AM 25-036, correct, the change order?
Correct.
So, reading that change order, it looks like the contractor made a mistake and used the wrong materials. Is that correct?
There is additional volume of material, yes, and there was an increase in the unit cost of the material that we negotiated with the contractor to come down with the price that he originally proposed.
So, reading the IM, it says the contractor was supposed to use lower quality and lower cost quarry run rock, maybe this is the inappropriate time because this is the AM, but the contractor was supposed to use lower quality and lower cost quarry rock on the top berm of the dike, but instead used the same large size rip route that had been used for the dike face. As a result of this, the borough negotiated a lower price to the contractor for the excess rip route material, but the negotiated price still exceeded the initial contract rip route amount. So, I guess the question is, I mean, it sounds like a mistake was made, was it the contractor or was it Department of Public Works, sir?
Through the mayor, Assemblymember Sumner. I wouldn't classify it as a mistake, you know, it was a pretty fast and furious repair that had an estimated quantity of material. It had a set of construction documents that provided some guidance to the contractor. In the end, you know, they constructed the dike of some material that it didn't require, you know, if you're familiar with classification type four material, it didn't necessarily need type four, but they placed type four and they tried to charge us for type four. We certainly could have gone the route of having them deconstruct the dike and put new material down. And in the end, what we did is negotiate a price that was more comparable to the material that they should have placed, and they left it in, they left the higher quality material in place.
Further questions to staff regarding the ordinance? Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 25-051. We do not have a sign up sheet. Does anyone in the audience like to give the Assembly some information on this ordinance? Okay, do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. Go ahead and close the public hearing.
I move to adopt ordinance serial number 25-051.
Okay, discussion by the Assembly? Is there any objection? Okay, go ahead.
I mean, yeah, this gave me a little bit of heartburn, but I think that Tom's explanation was adequate, you know?
Okay. So if there's some objection, then we need to vote. Oh, so you're, okay, you just had a comment then. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Is there any other comments or objections to the legislation? Okay, seeing and hearing none, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk? Okay, yep, yep, it passed. So now it's, we're up to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial number 25-052, an ordinance adopting MSB 15.24.030b47, Maddenuskis and Sidney Borough Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
Okay, and we didn't schedule staff report because you got report two weeks ago. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 25-052. It looks like we do have a sign up sheet. Oh, that's audience participation. Okay, all right, sorry. Anyone in the audience that would like to address ordinance 25-052? Do we have anybody on? We do not have anybody in line. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance serial number 25-052.
Okay, discussion by the Assembly? Any objection? Hearing no objection, and the legislation passes. Now we're to the point of the second audience participation. And if you spoke at the first audience participation, we are not able to speak at this one. But is there anyone, yes, come forth?
Hello, Madam Mayor, Assemblymembers, good evening. My name is Frank Bell. I chose to speak during the second audience participation, mostly because I was enthralled by hearing what our Ukrainian neighbors had to say, and I wish them all the best in maintaining their status here. But also because what I want to address comes very late on the agenda, which is the mayor's vacancy report. Myself and a lot of the library community have become quite concerned with what's going on with the library board, not the Citizens Action Advisory Committee, but the board itself. The last four members that have been appointed, one listed on their application that they were applying for the Big Lake Book Review Committee. I'm not sure they even knew what board they were applying to. The only reason they listed of having interest was to remove or to concern about sexualized books in the library. The next one was a self-described, and I quote, religious right wing extremist. The next was Mark Spohn. He and his wife have openly advocated in public, calling librarians evil, pedophiles, Satanists, child groomers, and have advocated for shutting down libraries. And then now, we see that the next nominee on this agenda is Sally Pollan, who has also openly advocated for not just removing books from the library, but burning books in a meeting, a public meeting. So obviously, there's some concern that there's a pattern here of people all with the same very extreme viewpoint being appointed to this board. And the reason that's particularly concerning now is that last night's Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, the Community Development Director mentioned a memo that it sounds like may actually give that board some oversight over procurement of library materials that get presented to them, allowing them to red flag materials. And these people that have been trying to ban these books have been largely unsuccessful through most channels, legal, administrative, and so on and so forth. And our fear now is that if we keep stacking this board with people all of the same viewpoint that does not represent a majority of the community, they may now be able to actually prevent the procurement of materials in the first place, rather than trying to get them removed. So I would just urge concern and advocate for maybe choosing a different nominee than the one that's currently on the mayor's vacancy report. Now, to her credit, Jackie Goforth was also an applicant for that position. And, you know, it was, I think that would have been a little bit too obvious had they chosen Jackie. But it just, it seems like there's a dangerous pattern getting put in place here. I guess that's it. And I've always wanted to say this, I yield the remainder of my time.
Anyone else who would like to say something to the Assembly regarding any item? Okay, do we have anybody online? We do not. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the audience participation. We are now to the consent agenda. I know we do have a number of items already pulled, but is there any more that any of our people from the agenda would like to, or from the Assembly would like to pull? Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner?
I'd like to pull Resolution 25-031.
I think it's already pulled, I think.
Yeah, never mind.
Okay, yeah. Any, any other things to be pulled? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have some to read that haven't been pulled?
We do, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'll start with Resolution 25-038, a resolution approving unincorporated communities for participation in the fiscal year 2026 Community Assistance Program. Resolution 25042, a resolution extending the timeframe for the Emergency Services Station 12-9 Building Project. Resolution 25-043, a resolution amending the scope of work for Port McKenzie Deferred Maintenance Project. AM 25035, approval of utility relocation costs of $117,550 to N-Star Natural Gas for the Helen Lane Project in Bogard Road Service Area Number 25, and extending the completion date to December 15, 2025. AM 25036, approval of change order number one for contract number 25032B with Western Construction and Equipment LLC to add $146,484 for the 2024 Takina Revetment and Dyke Repair Project. AM 25038, award proposal 25139P to JHB Group Inc. for the contract amount of $232,991.03 to supply a fire prevention training trailer. And AM 25039, award proposal number 25095P to Navision Architect and Architecture Incorporated for the contract amount of $2,453,338 to Design Birchtree Charter School.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Discussion by the Assembly? Is there any objection? Not, then the consent agenda has been approved. Okay, Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First up, we have Resolution 25031, a resolution directing the manager to subdivide Tracts 10 and 13, Alaska State Land Survey number 80-111, Platte number 82-80, Palmer Recording District, to separate the rail transportation corridor and terminal easements of the Point McKenzie Rail Extension Project from the remaining agricultural land in preparation for future land disposal, and it was pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay, Assemblymember McKee, will you move the resolution, please, so we can discuss?
I move RS 25031.
Okay.
But I'd like to do something a little different. Max, since you were going to say something about it, I'd really like to hear what you have to say, because mine is, my, my thing on this is I really don't understand what we're doing here. Maybe you do. Or maybe your question will shed some light on it for me.
I mean, yeah, we were, we discussed this some months ago about the parcel that was bought for the rail extension. And then there was multiple different options that were presented to the Assembly at that time, and this was one of them. And I think that the sticking point was that it, you know, if you subdivided agricultural land once, you can't subdivide it again. I noticed that in this, there was basically just one line that says the staff thinks that it can be subdivided again. And I would like some explanation on that, because this probably is the best option if, if we can't, if the future owner can subdivide it again. But it's literally just one sentence.
Yeah, and I, I also had a question, because it seems to contradict itself. Is this land dedicated to agriculture in perpetuity, or is it, you can build a housing subdivision there? I, I see your head shaking. What do you mean? What do you tell me?
Would you like staff to reply?
Yeah.
Is there any objection from the Assembly calling staff? Okay, I don't see any objection. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Gillian Morrissey, for the record again, Community Development Director. I understand, through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee, this is confusing. We did a presentation, Assemblymember Sumner is correct, that was about 20 minutes long in order to be able to try to explain what's happening. The purpose of this legislation this evening is to direct the manager to subdivide the PMRE easement from the farm properties in preparation for a sale of the farm properties. By doing this, let me back up. We have been in correspondence with the state, and it, it has indicated that subdivision, so removing the PMRE reserve and easement should not preclude the future owner of the farm parcels from future subdivision. This will also allow us, with the PMRE easement, that we could permit uses within the rail easement. Currently, it's under a permit for hay. That subdivision will, this process would take about three to six months if approved. And if you'll remember, the whole, the, what is happening currently on these properties, we had two, we were essentially acting as landowners. We only have one of the farmhouses that is occupied right now, and that is through August 2025. So this is a path forward to moving beyond that situation.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I might, so it's the state's position, you're saying that it's the state's position that the land can be subdivided again, and I'm assuming that's because the portion that we are cutting out of the lot is, is the condemned portion, that the covenants have been condemned. So have, have you consulted our attorney on this issue, or are you just relying on what the state has been saying?
Through the mayor to the Assembly, I will.
Mr. Attorney, you're being someone's, I think.
There, to the Assembly, and Assemblymember Hale, if the state says they don't think it precludes further subdivision, we're not in a position to second guess that. These are state regs, these are state ag parcels, they were created by acts of the state legislature. Obviously, they were acquired by us for purposes of the rail. But just like when we deal with grants and permissible scopes of uses of money, you know, for, for example, the PMRE grants within the past year and a half or so, when the manager came to the Assembly and said, hey, we're going to explore potentially using this as a multimode facility and potentially looking at a road, you know, the state said, yeah, that would be allowable without having to go back to the legislature. So from the legal perspective, if they've given us that guidance and advice, there's no reason to contradict it or, or research it or look at it and say, oh, well, we think they're wrong, because it's the state, it's their, their covenants, it's their parcels, it's their creation. And these are state ag parcels, to answer Ms. McKee's question, they cannot be used for other purposes. We had to condemn the ag rights by filing a lawsuit and actually having the state show up, and we had to pay them something for the ag rights on the parcels that we took the ag rights from. Does that answer your question, Assemblymember Hale?
I guess, it does for the most part, but I guess, kind of, I have a follow up, like, so for right now, the state says, yeah, but it can be subdivided again. But what happens if, say, you know, a future administration comes in, we have a new attorney general, you know, and that, that administration takes a different position. And we've already sold the land, and now the new owner goes to try to subdivide it, and the state has been taking a different position than they're taking now. What would happen in that instance?
Yeah.
We would probably wave the email in their face and say, but you said we could, and while it's not a formal attorney general opinion, it is the same concept as it is with the grant monies for the PMRE when they said, yeah, you can do this. I guess nothing precludes them from changing their mind.
Mike, go ahead.
That's satisfying, thank you.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Mike.
Through the mayor to, to the Assembly, the reason that we chose to present this option as staff records, administration's recommendation, is to preserve the greatest deal of flexibility for the borough. So when we looked at it, we said if we don't subdivide and we just sell the whole thing, you know, we sell it off, the easement still remains on the 200 feet by two mile section or whatever was previously described, but it's for a rail easement. And I have no idea what the borough might want to use that for down the line. And so we thought it would be in our best interest to own it outright, as opposed to having somebody else own it with a rail easement on it when we don't even know what the disposition of the rail is going to be. So I can't speak to what the state's going to do in future years. I'm looking at, my recommendation to you is preserve the greatest deal of flexibility for the borough.
Further questions or comments? Assemblyperson?
Is the subdividing is going to be done through our plotting board and through the Mattsu Borough?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember phone off. We will work with the state in order to do the subdivision and walk through the process. And yes, we will be working with our planning commission. We have an agent in our land management division that will be working through this.
Would it be possible to add a note or amendment when we're doing that, that this was not considered as a subdividing to those tracks, so that those remaining tracks, which are still, I mean, hundreds of acres in size each, if somebody did wanted to use that first option to subdivide in half or whichever method, that that option is still available to them?
Not on our subdivision process, no.
So in this process, or while the, it's going through the plotting or whatever, that's not possible to add that one subdivision remain? not possible to add that one subdivision remain, one time subdivision will apply to this specific subdivision?
It is not. But what you can do is provide all the correspondence to any future potential buyer, if it's going to go for land sale or however it's disposed of, you can provide all the correspondence from the state to the prospective buyers. Okay, thank you.
Assemblyperson Gamble, did you, were you going to, oh, I'm sorry, I thought your hand went, Deputy Mayor.
So this two hundred foot easement going downside, when we dispose of the property, the borough's keeping the two hundred feet, are we going to take and lease that easement back to somebody, this, the future buyer, if they wanted to hay that property? And that way it would keep the property clear?
Through the mayor, yeah, I think, through the mayor to Mr. Bernier, I think we would probably continue to execute a hay permit and allow it to be farmed until we figure out what that use might be down the line. The subdivision just preserves whatever we might choose to do with it in the future. And so, yes, absolutely, our intent would be, hey, let somebody farm it, bring in a little bit of revenue. There's no reason for it to just allow it to become overgrown.
Right.
But what we're looking at long term is we're not sure, because that was intended for a terminal reserve for the rail. I don't see that happening, but that doesn't mean somebody else might not come up with a better idea about how it could be utilized. And so, I mean, and I want to be clear, like, it is a viable option just to sell it all and not subdivide. It's just, then you're going to have an easement over that track, and I think you're going to have very limited options and what you can do with that land in the future because the easement is specific to a rail easement. And so that's why we came up with this recommendation in the end. What my primary concern is, is getting those farms back into private hands. We have, we had two tenants, one tenant's moved, I agreed to extend the other tenant through August.
August.
Because we're, we, it's going to take us a few months, several months to walk through this process. And so we saw no rush and decided, fine, you can stay there through the summer, and we've agreed to that. And so that's why we're bringing it forward because we did not, the Assembly did not make a decision, and I'm asking for that direction before we move forward. And I, I think I got a text message that showed a correction. I, I repeated the two hundred foot, I'm being told it's thirteen hundred and twenty feet wide by two miles long. So it's more substantial than two hundred feet wide.
That's a whole parcel, isn't it?
That'd be a whole, whole section.
That's a quarter width.
I'm pulling the legislation.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of that legislation in front of me. I'm, I'm looking at our Port Operations Manager in the back who has a little bit of familiarity with this.
If you have the legislation in your hand, if you go to the IM twenty five zero seven zero and open to Exhibit A, you can see those, you can see the two farm parcels with the Port McKenzie Transportation Corridor easement.
Deputy Mayor, do you still have some question? Okay. Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I buy and sell a lot of land, I'm not, not a real estate attorney by any means, but, I mean, I, I concur with what my manager Brown is saying, that this does seem like the best option. You know, I think that lands, their explanation and Nick's explanation kind of assuaged my fears.
Further discussion by the Assembly. Okay, is the Assembly ready to vote, sir? Is there any objection to the Resolution twenty five dash zero three one? Okay, hearing no objection, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution twenty five oh four oh, a resolution amending the scope of work and budget and extending the timeframe for a fill site project for the Central Mattsu Fire Service Area, and this was pulled by Assembly Member Gamble.
Okay. Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move Resolution two five dash zero four zero.
Okay, would you like to speak to it or talk about why you pulled it?
I would, thank you. Director Barkley, I just got a couple of questions for you. So Central Mattsu.
Does the Assembly have any objection for staff to approach the Assembly?
Sorry.
Okay, no, go ahead, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Central Mattsu doesn't even have a parcel of land to do this yet, is that correct?
Through the mayor, Assembly Member Gamble, that's correct. It's mile eighteen-ish KGB, but we do not have the land purchased.
Okay, and it's my understanding that they actually don't even know what the total cost of this project's going to be, so we're basically just taking money and we're putting it in a pot and just setting it aside until later, some later date, is that correct?
Through the mayor, Assembly Member Gamble, so I'd like to back up a little bit, and you were part of when we did this a little bit, but it started off was we did a study, and it was back in maybe two thousand eighteen, nineteen, I don't recall, but they did a study, and we found out that there's two areas that were, were lacking in water supply, and that's part of our ISO rating is why that was important. One of them was off by Paradise by Shaw Elementary, that was one area. And that project, we finally got it completed, and that was around one point eight million dollars. When we started this, each site was supposed to, was going to cost one point two million. So what we did, we put it into four separate years that we were going to fund it, so six hundred thousand each year, and then get both of them done. That was the original plan. So as costs went up, we took money out of one project for the other fill site and moved it into one to get one completed. Now, that one's completed, we want to take the extra funds from that project with the funds that we have, put that all into one project, and that will be the, for the project down Connect Goose Bay Road. For that project, we will need to purchase the land, that'll include the tank and the facility. These facilities are for water supply, they're warm storage units. So what happens is, it'll be, the fire trucks will be able to drive inside to fill up with water, the building will have a bathroom in it, but it will also count as a fire station because of the way we're designing it. So for ISO, it puts us, having a fire station at, at mile eighteen KGB also gives us a fill site, so it's kind of helping us in both directions. So that's where we're at right now. Finding the land is the problem. That was also the problem on the other one, because originally the land we're on for Shaw Elementary, that one is school district, and at first they didn't want to partner with us, and then they just decided they would, and we built that facility, so it's a shelter for them for an evacuation of the school. That facility is built to, to put the students in in case of evacuation. So that's how that came to materialize. Now we've got to build the one more site, so that's where we're at. I hope I answered your question, I took us back in time a little bit.
You did, and, you know, I fully support the water fill sites, and you know that because they're essential for firefighting operations, especially in the wintertime when our normal water sources are frozen and unavailable. And ISO counts those water fill sites as a water source for our insurance rating, so I wholeheartedly support what they're doing. I would just rather see that Central lets this money roll over into their fund balance and that they come back to the Assembly with the total cost of the project, with the land cost and the building design and everything, and just do it as one project instead of trying to piecemeal this together. That's just my suggestion.
Through the mayor, Assemblymember Gamble, Central, Central Fire Service spoke with them about that, and, and they were fine with that, for that option, that they had no problem with that, and we can do that. It's, because it's not going to be built in the next year or two, so, so they're, they're okay with that, if that's what the Assembly wants to do.
And think, because the money doesn't go away, it just rolls right back into their fund balance.
That's correct, right, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers, comment?
Just a clarification from Assemblymember Gamble, are you asking for us to vote this down, or maybe I'm wrong?
Yeah, I'm going to vote it down and let the money just roll back into their fund balance, and then they can come back to us when they have the complete plan with the land purchase and everything at one time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion by the Assembly. Okay, I guess we have an objection. So, Madam Clerk, would you call, roll then for people to vote, please?
If I can get the members in the room to please vote. Assemblymember McKee? Thank you. Assemblymember Hale?
No.
What was that? You're voting no?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, I was just making sure, I was just making sure, Tim, thank you for your patience.
Sir, if you don't know, we know, no.
Madam Mayor, it failed with Assemblymember Fonov in support.
Okay, thank you.
Let me capture that quickly, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh huh. Then go ahead with the next.
We have Resolution twenty five zero four one, a resolution establishing the minimum level of funding for the Mattsu Borough School District from local sources for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, and Assemblymember McKee pulled this resolution.
Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, would you move the resolutions and then discuss, please?
Yes, I move RS twenty five dash zero four one.
Okay, discussion.
I guess my, my question is, I don't really underst, maybe we've done this every other time before, but it's not familiar to me. What are we saying exactly here? That there's this overall budget, which we don't really know what is going to, we haven't asked, and then this is a, and, and this is the minimum, is that, am I all right with that?
Okay, Mister Attorney?
State law says that the borough must provide a minimum of two point six five mils of area-wide tax dollars to the schools. So what happens is they present a budget, they say this is the amount we want, it's, it's always way more than that, we always give them way more than that, but to comply with the state law, we must pass a minimum funding resolution. This minimum funding resolution before you tonight is the equivalent of two point six five mils. When you actually pass the budget, you will give them substantially more than that, and that will be the actual amount. If you do not pass this resolution tonight, what they asked for is automatically approved, and you have no choice but to appropriate it to them.
Thank you very much, that's exactly what I wanted to know.
Now you know why you asked to pull it, right? Further discussion by the Assembly. Is there any objection to Resolution twenty five dash zero four one? Okay, hearing done, and the resolution has been approved.
Resolution twenty five zero four six, a resolution in support of Ukrainian refugees and their path to permanent residency, and this was pulled by Assemblymember Fonov.
Okay, Assemblyperson Fonov, go ahead.
I move Resolution twenty five zero four six.
Okay. Do you want to discuss, sir?
Yeah, so that's all the people left already, they definitely came out and gave good arguments to support, and what I wanted to say, I provided, I think, on your tables, a amendment that I will offer, and we've seen very emotional testimony from the one side of the people that were affected, but there is also not as big of a percentage-wise compared to, from people that came from the Ukrainian side, there is also some people that kind of leave those circumstances from the Russian side under a very similar status, except they were not eligible for a lot of programs such as like free rent and things like that, but they're also in the category of uncertainty of what their status is going to be. And with this amendment, it will give, I guess, them same chance of pleading for their case, for them to be able to be, you know, the productive members of this Mattsu Borough, whom I've gotten to know from both sides very closely. And, I mean, I can say that in the nineteen ninety five, as a kid, I came as a refugee, but we had a little different status. We had to live here for one year here without staying in trouble, and we actually got a green card, which then led to citizenship. They don't have that opportunity, they have just kind of one-way ticket without really certainty, so I think this would be appropriate for us to support them. They're decent people, hardworking people, they adapted pretty well. As you could see, the younger generation speaks fairly decent English already in just a short time they were here, and even a lot of older people are attempting to speak. So, and with this, I'll have, I don't know what, if I need to read the whole thing or just partially, but I do want to offer this amendment, and I would ask for your support, and then also support the resolution as a whole.
Okay, so before you, you have the amendment, everyone have a copy of the amendment? Okay, so the discussion is on the amendment? Yes, Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Point of order, we do have the amendment, but the public doesn't? I don't know that they do, I just feel like that's just a process, we should read it into the record, so people know what we're discussing.
I'll, I'll read it for Assemblymember Fonov, but it has been provided at the back of the room, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I still think it's good for people listening online who may not have immediate access to it.
No problem. Assemblymember Fonov is moving to amend Resolution serial number twenty five oh four six as follows, to amend the title to insert the word "and Russians" after Ukrainian, number two, to add the words "and Russians" in the first and second whereas clauses, after Ukrainians to add "and Russians," and in the second one, after Ukrainians to add "and Russians," to add the words "and Russians" in the resolution clauses to read, and now therefore be it resolved, after the word Ukrainians, insert the words "and Russians," and in the be it further resolved clause, after the word Ukrainians, insert the words "and Russians," and in an additional be it further resolved clause, insert the word, and words "and Russians" after Ukrainians.
If I can break that. Assemblyperson Fonov? And I just want to say that the people that came from the region, one of the gals that spoke is from Donbass region, who is very, and she mentioned that the war actually really started in two thousand fourteen, so these people that you wouldn't be able to tell the difference, they speak same language, they, they're same, like, pretty much neighbors, like, they were affected by something that was outside of their control, we're not, and I would not want to take position on one side or another. However, the people that have been affected and that were here, that came here, whether from one or the other country, I want to be supporting them equally.
Further discussion? Is there any, I'm sorry.
No, just very briefly, that's, you tend to just think of one side or the other, but actually, these, it has nothing to do with their politics, it just happens to be geographically where they have lived and their victims, and I, and I really commend you for putting that in there because I, because it's a decent thing to do.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Is there any objection to the amendment? Okay, the amendment passes. Now you have before you Resolution twenty five dash zero four six is amended, discussion. Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
This one is, sorry, it was, it was hard to watch, and moving to watch the people come here and take the time to testify to us. I cannot imagine fleeing your home under those conditions and coming here and trying to start a new life. I think most of us have, are refugees, and some of us not too far back, mine is, is two generations. And the, gosh, I'm sorry, the melting pot, you know, is what has made us a strong country, and the fact that these people are coming here and are so thankful to our country for providing them a life and, and are working hard, and I, I just, I just can't imagine looking at, you know, at those faces and looking at what has happened to their country that was a functioning country until this descended upon them. Like you said, they're victims, they're not, they weren't the ones who, you know, chose, they're trying to live their lives like us, so I think we can all just look at them and see ourselves in their shoes, and the fact that they were willing to come here tonight, I think there's, there's more besides, I'm glad you added the Russians, I think there's, there's more. You know, I think Afghans are here in this country, other country, people who have fled horrible situations, and I was asked by the Ukrainian community, or we were all emailed, and so I wasn't trying to exclude anybody, it's just that I was asked by them, and they are living here, trying to make a living, and... a living, and they are concerned and in fear of losing that. And I think we, as a body, have a leadership role to say, these are people in our community who are trying to serve our community and fill jobs that we need, and to try to provide them a little bit of reassurance that we're happy to have them here. They are welcome. And to send a message to our national leaders that we want to see these folks, that they are serving our community, number one, and that we want to see them be able to stay here and have a path to citizenship as long as they're doing everything to try to contribute. So there's not a lot I've done in my time on Assembly that really strikes me at the heart, but this, well, I shouldn't say that. There's quite a bit. But this one was, I just, just looking at those folks and seeing how heartfelt they were in coming is really touching that they're in our community, and our community is welcoming, and I think that's what this country is about.
Further discussion on Resolution 25, Assemblyperson Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the United States of America has a long, long history of providing safe harbor to people that are fleeing war-torn countries. And what I saw here tonight was families that have come to America looking for the American dream and to find a safe place, a safe harbor to raise their families and work hard, like I said, and to have a chance at the great American dream. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Further discussion?
I just want to add, yeah, there is a, the reason, you've seen and everything that we've seen is, was very true, and I wanted to add just the fact that they are well organized because they're united in their efforts to have some more certainty, and they've had a very good structure system, including my sister Larissa, who spoke. So it is a, it's, it's, we're, like I said, in my, I'm not taking one side or the other. However, those people, the people that actually came here, those, I believe, are actually decent people, and they are hardworking, and I think you witnessed that, and I, none of them, as you can see, blamed one side or the other. They were just thankful to be here, and I think that this would be a good resolution for us, and hopefully they will have certainty in the near future, because that would be a good asset for us here, so.
Further discussion on the resolution, Assemblyperson McKee?
Yeah, just really briefly and one regret. I wish I'd stuck around so that when we did, because I might stop, when we voted for them, it would have been really cool to just, I think it would have been pretty exciting.
Any objection to the resolution as amended? Okay. Then it becomes passed. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. AM 25037, award of bid number 25144B to McKinley Fence Company of Mattsu Valley Incorporated for the contract amount $169,596 to supply and install fencing and an entrance gate at the central landfill. This was pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
I'd like to move, whatever, what is that one? AM 25037, yeah. I just have a question. What else are we fencing in that place? Because, I mean, I've been going in there for 32 years, and it never occurred to me to try to go in and steal something from the landfill, but oh, well. But then we've got this enormous fence with all the concrete. You couldn't, you know, it reminds me of Terrace Park or something. What are we now doing?
Oh, I don't know. It wasn't too long ago, we had a number of presentations on it, but I'll let the staff go ahead and talk about it.
Sure. Mayor, to the mayor, to Assemblymember McKee, to Madam's Public Works Director, you know, the description of the project is attached to the IM. It really, there is a state statute that requires that we control public access, and as the mayor alluded to, we provided presentations. There's a significant amount of work to expand the operations at the landfill, and so now we need to put a new fence around the boundary of that operation.
Okay, sure, sweet. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on, I'm sorry, AM 25-037? Any objection? Seeing no objection, then the AM has been adopted. Madam Clerk, is that it for the consent agenda finally? Okay. So now we are into unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business. There are no vetoes. Now we are in new business. Yes, ma'am. There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For introduction, on May 6, 2025, ordinance serial number 25018, ordinance serial 25055 with the company resolution 25044, and for introduction for public hearing on April 22nd, April 24th, and April 29th would be the budget public hearings and the ordinance 25025. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for May 6 and April 22nd, April 24th, and April 29th, respectively.
Okay, discussion by the Assembly? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing done, the legislation then has been introduced. Okay. Deputy Mayor, will you move the vacancy report, please?
Madam Mayor? Since my name is on the vacancy list, do I need to recuse myself?
I'm sorry, what?
Since my name--
Oh, since your name is on there.
Dee and Dimitri's were on there, too.
Just a minute. Mr. Attorney?
Only if there's objection to them voting. I mean, when you have, when you have seats that are designated as Assemblymembers, there's a rule called the Rule of Necessity. Only Assemblymembers can vote on seats for Assemblymembers. So if you feel compelled to step away, you can. There's no principle of law that says you absolutely have to unless someone objects to you voting, in which case the mayor would then make a ruling under the state law.
I'm fine with this, as long as it's, there's nothing against it. I'll stay. Thanks.
Okay, ready. Now Deputy Mayor?
I move to confirm the appointments requested by the mayor as follows: Agriculture Advisory Board, Craig Hanson; Joint Assembly School Board Committee on School District Funding Issues, Dee McKee; Dimitri Fonov; Library Board, Sally Pollan; Port Commission, Bill Gamble; Gold Trail RSA Number 28, William Swenson; Lazy Mountain RSA Number 19, Scott Goodwin; Meadow Lakes RSA Number 27, Charles Conrad and Sean Bradley.
Okay. Discussion? Yeah, Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
I would like to divide the question on this and take the nomination or appointment of Sally Pollan for the library board separately.
Okay. Discussion on separating the question, which will mean that we will vote on everybody, and then you will vote on the library board appointee?
And I could speak to it briefly.
Madam Mayor, the division of the questions is not debatable.
It's not debatable. Okay. All righty, so I guess then you will vote.
You can ask if there's any objection to dividing the question.
Oh, is there any objection?
To what?
To dividing the question.
Just take that person separate?
Yeah. So if you don't want to divide the question, then you would object to that motion?
Okay.
Okay. So is there any objection to dividing the question? No. Okay, so, all righty, so with Assemblyperson Nowers, which part did you want to take first? The--
Madam Mayor, I would suggest you take up the rest of the vacancy report.
Okay, so the clerk has said we should take up the rest of the vacancy report first, and then we'll take up the library board appointee. Okay, so the discussion on the vacancy report? Any objection to the vacancy report? Okay, now we will discuss the library board nomination. Discussion? Yes.
So the reason I pulled this is I think with these boards, we're looking for diversity of people and views, and the reason we have an LCAC is because people were unhappy with the library board, and Ms. Pollan already serves on the LCAC, and so does Chad Scott. And so now we would have two people serving on both boards, and I know we had three other applicants for that. So I just want these board, I think these boards need to have, you know, not only a diversity of views, but a diversity of people, and to have the same two people serving on both boards. I think there's a lot of people in the community, and we've got other people willing to serve on that board. So I'd like us to go back and look at the other applications and any other ones that come in and find somebody who's not already serving on one of these library advisory boards, because the libraries serve us all, and we know there's quite a difference, you know, different opinions out there. So I think we need to make sure we're, especially on these boards, but all boards, making sure that we have a diversity out there, and we've got other people willing to serve in this case.
What, let me, I'll address the library board for a little bit. The vacancy on the library board for District 2 has been vacant for three-plus months, and just within the last month have we gotten the four applicants. The one applicant does not live in District 2, lives in District 1, so therefore I didn't feel that they were qualified. And so of the three remaining ones, I chose Sally Pollan. Sally did ask me if she should go ahead and resign from the, I call it the Book Review Committee. It's the Literacy Committee. And I said, don't do that if you want to continue serving there until you've been confirmed by the Assembly. And then if you've been confirmed by the Assembly, then I will accept your resignation. And so that then addresses that question. And I'm open to any other questions anybody else has, but that has been the discussion. So, yes.
So there is one other candidate that is in District 2, because we haven't discussed this. So there is another candidate that is in, there's two other candidates--
Two other candidates.
In District 2, neither of which serve on the LCAC.
Right, neither one of them serve on the LCAC.
And it seems like the LCAC, if I understand this right, we're potentially going to have a library board that is going to be pre-screening the books that go in the library. So they're kind of going to have the input on the front end. And I just, again, think there's a lot of people in this community, and so you have the same, you have the same people serving, who just served reviewing books, and now you're going to have them on the library board reviewing books. And it's, there's a lot of people out there that are willing to serve on board. So I think we could put out the word on this. If you're not happy with the other two people in terms of thinking they're the best for it, I think we could work together and find somebody that would work, that wouldn't be somebody who's already serving on a library board, even if they're planning to resign.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I think with Sally's experience on the other board, that she'll bring a wealth of knowledge to this board.
Okay, Assemblyperson Sumner?
I was going to say the identical thing to what Assemblymember Neer said. He just peeped into the punch. So I think her experience and interest in serving would be well-served on the higher board.
Assemblyperson Gamble?
Assemblymember Fonov supports Sally Pollan on this board, and he thinks that she will bring balance to the board, and so I support her nomination as well.
Assemblyperson Fonov?
And I think Mr. Gamble here spoke what I was going to say. So I think that board, I would say, is not as diverse. This would probably balance it out. In some ways, not all the way even.
Further discussion, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Just want to clarify, this is sort of the Palmer seat. This is District 2. This is District 2 Palmer. This is, there's not sort of designated for sure seats on there, but this is the Palmer area seat. They don't have to be from Palmer, but I just heard Mr. Gamble's comments and wanted to make sure. Yeah.
I don't know. Next time the deputy mayor comes from Palmer, I'd hate to tell him you don't have a representative on the library board. So, anyway, further discussion. I guess there isn't an objection, so, Madam Clerk? Yes, vote would--
Please, everybody stop. I'm going to reset this. It looks like Assemblymember McKee's button was already pushed down, or did you just now vote?
I'm looking for it. I think that's when I pushed it, but that's the one I want.
Okay, just making sure. Will the rest of the people in the room please vote? Assemblymember Hale?
No.
Madam Mayor, it passes with Assemblymember Nowers and Hale opposed.
All righty, going back to our agenda, we do not have any other new business, but we do have, and I'll wait till the clerk can get ready to read that, other new business.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance amending MSB 2.08060 and MSB 2.12060, compensation for the mayor and the Assembly, and Assemblymember Fonov has a motion to amend something previously adopted.
Okay, Assemblyperson Fonov, you want to--
Do I move to amend part, or do I need to bring it on the floor?
I'm sorry, didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, you need, there is--
Okay, no, I have this one. Yeah, okay. So I move to amend something previously adopted in March 18, 2025. Refer an ordinance serial number 25047 to the commission salaries and the amounts by striking 365 and inserting 60 days in its place. And if I may briefly speak on it? Is that okay? Okay, so when we originally passed it, we gave, you know, up to 365 days, but then I learned that it was, it was not going to change the schedule of their regular meeting, which is not going to be till next year. And at that time, I didn't, a lot of us fully didn't understand how referral meant if we didn't go that route, it kills it. But this, this what I'm asking is for the clerk's office or whoever's schedule is to reach out to them and hopefully schedule some of the next 60 days so they can come back with their recommendation. And that's all I have.
Okay, discussion on, yes, Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, I really, after a lot of thought about this, I don't have a problem with the clerk's office scheduling the board to meet in the next 60 days. All they're going to be doing is meeting for a couple hours and providing us with some information. There's no, there's nothing in there that is going to require us to take any action on it. So it'll be one less thing that they have to deal with next year. So I'll support this motion.
Discussion, yes, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Thank you. So it won't surprise no one, I have not been in favor of any salary increases for the Assembly, and I don't think it's a good thing for a body to initiate their own process for a salary increase, which is what we're doing here. I think we should leave it to the regular schedule. Every two years, they take a look at it, and they can make recommendations to us. And then it is a weird aspect that I think that, I just don't know, I've never had any other job where I could vote in my own raise. But I'm just opposed to the idea of increasing our salary, and I'm really opposed to initiating our own, speeding up the process for a salary review. So I'll be opposing this.
Okay, further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I remain opposed to increasing the Assembly salary. There absolutely no reason why we need to, you know, stretch the borough budget further just to pay ourselves more. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Sumner, did you raise your hand? Or somebody down here? Okay, I'm sorry. Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, the first time this came around, we weren't. We, I, it was such a nice surprise when they said, geez, I think they're recommending the salaries and amounts. Commissioner are recommending that you guys get a raise. And I thought, oh, that is so wonderful. And then it got, somehow it disappeared into the mist. So I don't think it's a case of us saying we are voting ourselves a new salary raise. It's like, wait a minute, three years ago, they said we should, and we didn't, and give them another shot at it. They may say we don't deserve it. They may--
They may say, leave it where it is. I don't know. But I think what went on in 2021 wasn't any of us saying, we should get a raise. It's like, they think we should get a raise. I'm still for, if they think we should get a raise, I'm for it.
Okay. So we should be discussing just the amendment that will change that's 365 to the 60 days. So that's the amendment. Yeah. That's all right. Okay. Yes. Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, thanks, Madam Mayor. This feels a little bit like deja vu, because a couple, you know, a couple of years ago, we already had this discussion, and we did refer this. You know, it was my, I'm the one that made the motion to move it from introductions to referrals, and it was my intention, you know, I introduced it with that referral with 365 days. And just like Assemblymember Nowers said, it was so that we would not instigate the process ourselves, and so we would have a third-party opinion. You know, I, you know, I said it then, and I'll say it again, I think it's impossible to remove your own bias. And unfortunately, we are tasked with determining compensation. So I think it's important that we don't take a role, yeah, a role in initiating that. So I'm not, I'm not changing my vote, you know? I mean, it was my intention to not have them come and meet earlier than next year when they were scheduled to.
So I think we have an objection, then a couple of objections to the amendments. Further discussion on the amendment, or are you ready to vote? I think, Madam Clerk, I think maybe we're ready to vote.
If the members in the room would please vote. Assemblymember Hale?
No.
Excuse me. Madam Mayor, it failed with Assemblymember Fawnoff, McKee, and Gamble in support.
Okay. All righty. So now, do we take up now, or is that-
That's it.
Make them mute, because that didn't change the first referral. Okay. All right. Okay. All righty. So now, we, there's no other referrals, right? And there are no reconsiderations? And so we are at parting comments at almost 8:30. Yee! And we had a room full of people tonight, so. Mr. Attorney, parting comments?
Yes, I'll be out next week. Shannon Bodeley from my office will be staffing the budget public hearings set for next week. And everybody have a good Easter. I'm saying Greek, Galionastasy. See you.
And congratulations to all your family that's graduating and moving on and up and above, so. Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments. No. Deputy Mayor, parting comments?
Thank everyone for coming out, you know, listening to the people, being thankful that they live in a country that can worship God freely, can work, we can make anything we want of ourselves. We're not pushed down by a tyrant government. I just wanted to thank the Lord. Thank you for this wonderful weather, easy winter we've had. Please keep us safe during fire season. Please bless our first responders. Thank you for letting us live in a country that we can worship you freely, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that you give us. Please keep residents here in the Matsu safe. Help the broken, downtrodden. In Jesus' name, we ask and pray, amen.
Assemblyperson Nowers, parting comments?
Yeah, the groundbreaking for the visitor center was great. It was great to see some dirt moved there and a project come to fruition that's been so long in the making. And it's exciting to see the developments along the gateway that truly will be the gateway for the Palmer area. And then I just have a lot of uneasiness with where we're going with our libraries. I think that we created the LCAC to allow people to have a bigger voice, who didn't feel like they had a voice, and I think that was a good thing. I now feel like we're moving the bar, that we were concerned about books being in the young adult, and they're moved to the adult, and now we want them out. And we're moving from a system of allowing a maximum amount of books and variety of books to be chosen, thinking about the population as a whole, and then anybody can object to a book, and that will be looked at, to a system where we're potentially allowing a small group of folks to pre-screen what goes into the library, and then you don't have that, you never have that ability to object to that. And I just am really uncomfortable with the ability of, you know, a nine-member board to choose for the whole valley and be as perhaps impartial as a librarian who's doing it on other categories, who you could always go to the library and ask for a book to be added, but you're just, I'd rather err on the side of allowing more books in than pre-screening them. And some of these books they've objected to, yeah, I mean, they are not great. But some of them, you know, The Bluest Eye, The Water for Elephants, I think my difference is that I see parents already having control. You can have your child go to that library, you can see what they're checking out, there's, there's nobody who's forcing you to have your child check that book out. I just don't see that. So I just want to express that, and if we're going to have a group that's pre-screening books that go in the library, I think we need to have a broader discussion about that.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, parting comments?
I'll be brief, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And I just wanted to let the Assembly know, we did meet with U.S. Senator Sullivan today. He stopped by the building, the mayor and I, had a great conversation for about an hour or so about some topics. We talked everything Port McKenzie. We talked about the Talkeetna Revetment and challenges with river erosion up there. We talked about Jonesville and the Shooting Park. We talked about Willow Fire EMS and our needs there in that area of the Parks Highway. And we talked about unmaintained roads. So things that are important to the Assembly that are on your list. We tried to target things that we thought had a specific federal connection, like our desire to federalize the Port McKenzie Rail Extension Project, and try to get some federal support to complete that project. We talked about Department of Defense and other topics related to Port McKenzie and development. And then I was really happy to kind of just keep the Talkeetna Revetment on the radar. That's one of those things, we don't have the capacity to solve alone, and it's not a problem until it is, and when it is, it's everybody's problem. So we're trying to continue to highlight that, and I do want to thank the Senator for support at the federal level to write language into the Water Resources Development Act that actually provides some provisioning for opportunities for FEMA funding, or Corps, actually Corps of Engineer funding, sorry, my bad, for riverine erosion, which has not been a thing. There's been opportunities for coastal erosion, but not for riverine. And obviously, as a community that has a lot of rivers, that's more problematic for us. And so I thought it was a great meeting, really appreciate the Senator taking the time to stop by and visit with us today. So I just wanted to highlight that for the Assembly, so you would know, if you hear about the visit, what we talked about. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the administration for continuing to move forward on the Jonesville project. I know it seems like it's, not much is happening a lot of the time, but I know behind the scenes there, they have been, you know, working their tails off, trying to get DNR to give, render a decision, and, you know, doing all these kind of things behind the scenes. And I also would like to thank the Assembly for continuing to support that project with their votes. So thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Madam Clerk, parting comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the Assembly, for having Jamie and I at the diocese evening.
You did a good job. We'll tell, we'll tell, give you a raise. We'll add that to the 365 days for the Assembly.
Swap it out for early retirement?
Yeah, right. Assemblyperson Nowers, parting comments?
I just wanted to say thanks for, for the staff, really. I mean, you look at these packets, and you read them individually, and you don't, I mean, it's really easy to overlook how much time goes into preparing the documents that are given to us, you know? And, and it's easy to comment on and ask pointed questions, but you know, there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of effort that goes into preparing for us. I think that's overlooked a lot of the time, or it's easy to, maybe it's not overlooked by us, but it's easy to overlook. And I just want to thank, thank the staff, really, for all their hard work and dedication to helping the Matsu Borough run.
Assemblyperson Gamble, parting comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a Point McKenzie Community Council meeting last Thursday, and unfortunately, they tabled a resolution supporting the Point McKenzie Rail Extension. And I believe it was because there was people that were on the Zoom call that were giving bad information to the community council. And so as one of the two most affected communities from PMRE, I think we need to do a little bit better job of getting out there and letting them know what was going on with the port. And so, Mr. Manager, I'd like Dave to schedule a presentation for the Point McKenzie Community Council, so that they know, you know, and I did my best to try and let them know, and I think Lynn McCabe did too, but Representative McCabe couldn't be on the call. I was there in person. We just, that public outreach, I think we just need to work on that a little bit more. And so I'd really like to see Dave out there, and I'll accompany him for that meeting, to give them the big picture, because they really don't know what's going on with the port right now. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Fawnoff, parting comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the staff. And what I was going to say, didn't get a chance, but I, just to correct, I didn't have this paper in front of me. There was, the reason why I wanted to get referred and shortened that time is because we do, we did have actually a recommendation for all the way, dating back to 2021, and at that time, Assembly did not take any action. So I don't think we're really initiating anything, especially the fact that the last recommendation from 2021 was never actually taken into action. And then the second thing, I'm excited that the library potentially would be, the board will be, have this new type of approach, and I think I might rather have nine-member board that consists of its citizens decide which books will be on its library shelves that are paid by the taxpayers instead of one individual librarian. So I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. That's all.
So, anybody have anything else? Oh, okay. So I will adjourn the meeting at 8:44.
You will now be disconnected.